It looks like it's 4:30. It's time to call the Scott County School Board to order. We have Kelly Caseley with us, and I think he wants to make a presentation.
Thank you, Chair. You know, it wasn't that long ago, was it? I mean, I brought you some little books, but just within the last couple of weeks, if I may take just a moment, I don't know who had personally in the mound. We received these. This is the latest edition there is now. Just received these. These are hot off the press. John is absent, but we probably will be. It was just a short seven days ago, I had the pleasure. Nancy allowed me to be at there a week ago tonight. Appreciate that. Here you are. John's over here. And we're looking forward to, is it Wednesday? Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, next week. And to have you all down. Yesterday, your director, along with many others from across the state, were with us in Nashville, in the gala, and I think with the exception of Clay County, everyone was present. So, we appreciate, we appreciate you all taking time to be there. On the ride up, I got to speak with your lobbyist, Ben Torres. Great guy. Y'all are being well represented down there. And I asked Ben, I said, "Ben, do you have any late-breaking updates that I could convey to the board here tonight?" And he did. He sent me a quick, "If you could just bear with me a couple of minutes, it won't take just a second." The truancy law, is Keith here?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Anyway, a little bio on this, and it's probably been about three months ago, Keith made contact with me about the situation. We've got problems. We had problems from the very beginning. In this legislative session, we're going to try to correct those problems. So, both Keith and I, I got John Fowerty, Representative John Fowerty, Dr. John Fowerty, on conference that day, and I'll bet you we spent 45 minutes on the phone. And so, John, at that time, gave us a promise, and he has fallen through with that in trying to correct this. But from Ben, okay? The update is, working with Representative Hicks, who by the way is the bill's sponsor, and Senator Lombard, TSBA and TOS, of course Tennessee Organization of School Suits and the Department of Ed, are going to make changes to this law. The changes include, one, removing conflicting portions of the law; two, changes to the truancy intervention plan so it is implemented; and five, unexcused advances; three, provide you all, LEAs, with the ability to file petition before the full plan is implemented if the parent or guardian is unwilling to cooperate in bringing their child to school. Does everything sound pretty good so far?
Yes.
I hope. Two, the RTI, and for those viewing, the RTI is that response to instruction intervention, excuse me, response to instruction and intervention to the BEP funding formula. This component will be funded at $13.3 million this year. Each district will receive at least one position. So, we hope to increase that funding, of course, he says, in the coming years. And teacher salaries. Teacher salaries, there will be an additional $55.10. That's good. And health insurance, you guys probably know more, a little more about this than I do. He says, $17.3 million, and I think there's not a dollar sign in front of that, but I assume that's a dollar, funds the state share of a 9.4 percent group health insurance increase for LEAs, you all, Nancy, plus you, or no, does it, yes, I don't know. Maybe it does, probably does. For LEAs effective January 1, 2018, and $10.50 in funds that state share of a 5 percent increase effective January 1, 2019.
With that salary increase, will it be based on growth?
Good question. I don't know. Normally, I don't have this in the past. I'll get us an answer, but...
I guess that's some of the false things we get, and it gets our hopes up.
Yes.
Is when you're projected to receive this, but then it'll say, you know, "Based on a 1 percent increase in growth." And if you don't have growth, you lose students, then funding, then I've got to tell these people here why we're not getting the raise.
You got it.
It puts a lot of pressure, puts a hard on us, when we're not receiving that extra BEP funding.
Correct.
Throughout that process.
Right.
But it's been on growth every time.
Every time, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Which is not...
So, let's make it a point to chase that rabbit down, that question, next week.
We do have some growth right now, I should say. Right now, we're up from last year, which is good for us.
That's great.
And we're hoping to continue to grow, we're hoping to continue to grow, so we'll see.
Well, we'll be looking forward to seeing you. Everyone try to make it now. Try to get down there. We want to see you. Bill, of course, will tell you that you're fixing to walk into one of the most beautiful buildings in Nashville, really and truly. And you know, that thing was on the list, that building was just one less two years ago for a total demolition. And you're going to get one of these when you walk in, wow moments. And it is absolutely beautiful. I'm so glad that we as a state put all those renovation dollars in there, because it's truly beautiful. So, I'll be looking forward to seeing you all next week. Okay? Thank you very much for allowing me to do this.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, at this time, we do have the Scott County Schools Volunteer of the Month, and as always, we're so appreciative of what you do, the time, the effort, to make our schools better and safer twice. First, Volunteer of the Month, for Birchfield Elementary, Allison Scamers. From Fairview Elementary, Emily Sheldon. Huntsville Elementary, Tonya King. And Tonya Philomene standing up here to change the president. And from Robbins Elementary, Mr. Randy Henry. Mr. Chairman, this, because of Volunteer of the Month. Thank you, guys. Mr. Chairman, next, we will have the Scott County Chamber of Commerce Stan, Scott High School Student of the Month. February Stan Student of the Month, Joy Lee Ward, 17-year-old son of Roger and Wendy Ward of the Huntsville community. Was selected by the Scott High School staff as the February Stan Student of the Month. Joy is a member of the Highland graduating class of 2018. He has attended the College of Applied Technology, where he passed his first state certification test in the CIT program with a perfect score. Joy will complete additional certification under the CIT program after high school, under the Tennessee Promise Program. His dream is to work in the field of computer security. Now, at this time, Mr. Chairman, we have presentations for the Scott County Schools Building Level Teachers of the Year and the District Level Teacher of the Year for 2018 and '19. First of all, it's an honor to get to do this every year, let me say that, because if you're chosen amongst your group, with a great group of teachers in every school, it's an honor for you and it's an honor for us to present this award, and I hope it's an honor for you to accept this, because this is voted upon by your peers and selected by your principal at your school. So, again, this is a great honor for you as a person and for us to be able to administrate this. First, from Birchfield Elementary, in the pre-K through 4, is Melanie Garrett, second grade teacher of our school. Also representing Birchfield, grades 5 through 8, is Ashley Hawkins, 7th grade, reading, language arts. Representing Fairview Elementary School, in the pre-K through 4 division, second grade teacher, is Kayla Flowers. Also representing Fairview Elementary School, grades 5 through 8, Ms. Laura Beth Lloyd. Huntsville Elementary School, pre-K through 4, Laura Lawson, special education. Huntsville Middle School. Huntsville Middle School, grades 5 through 8, Katie Sexton, special education. Robbins Elementary School, pre-K through 4, Elizabeth Carroll, 4th grade, reading, language arts. Robbins Elementary School, grades 5 through 8, Joni Byrne, 6th grade, math and science. Winfield Elementary School, PK 3-4, Kim King, physical education. Winfield Elementary School, grades 5 through 8, Randy Harris, English, language arts. And representing Scott High School, in grades 9 through 12 division, it is Tony Duncan, high school math. Before I announce the district level.
Melanie Garrett?
She's right here. We're here.
Before I announce the district level Teacher of the Year, I would like to announce some of the gift prizes that have been given. I want to thank Ms. Trigg, Keith, Capital Resource Center for doing the legwork for all this. And also, Ms. Linda Keith, for her hard work that she always does for our Teachers of the Year. The following items were donated by the following businesses. First, National Bank, $50. United Cumberland Bank, $25 of gold coins. People's Bank, $25. Fight to Electric, $50 credit on your electric bill. Rayzac's Restaurant, $20 gift certificate. Scott County News, a one-year subscription. Independent Herald, a one-year subscription. Coursage was given by Milford's Flower Shop. And the Scott County Board of Education, $150 and a plaque. At this time, my great pleasure to announce the district level Teachers of the Year. First, in the pre-K through 4 division, is Melanie Garrett, second grade teacher, Birchfield Elementary School. In the 5th to 8th grades, district level Teacher of the Year, Randy Harris, Winfield Elementary School. District level Teacher of the Year for the high school, grades 9 through 12, Mr. Tony Duncan, math.
Thank you. Congratulations to everyone. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the presentation.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? If not, we will go to the principals.
Cheryl, you want to go first?
I can. First, I want to say, having a good year at school, I think. Kids have been very excited, seem to like to be there this year. My 8th graders told me yesterday that it seemed like the year was just flying by, and they was really enjoying their 8th grade year. I like to hear that, and I'm sure you all do too. Our midpoints go out early next week, they're supposed to go out this week. And the snow when us getting out early, or the last two days, is kind of put that on hold. So, we'll get those out next week. Our Valentine festivities are also next week. Our soccer season starts in a few weeks, and our kids have been practicing, and I know they're excited about getting that started in the spring here. So, that's about all I have. Any last questions?
Thank you. Ms. Vaden?
Yes. I'm going to get Randy to help me in case I could get something. We've been trying to sanitize, I know Mr. Hall and I were talking earlier about, our numbers have not been as bad as the rest of the county. I don't know if we're just behind in that, or if, you know, spraying everybody as they come through the doors helping, but we are trying on that end. We have been working on the soccer schedule, I think Ms. Harris had told me that we're starting March the 6th, we'll start our actual soccer season. And they've kind of hammered out that schedule, and the referees and all of that. But, you know, I know they had talked about trying to get finished before the testing with the tournament and all of that, but you know whether we'll play a part. So, that's going to slow it down, but we are trying. I think we'll be fine either way as far as testing. I have faith in our kids, I have faith in the staff there, so. And I think that's county-wide. We'll do fine as far as that's going. Anything else you can think of? Oh, our dance, our Valentine dances was postponed. It was tomorrow night, we set it off until the 16th. So, we'll still continue to have that on February 16th. Other than that, we're pushing forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Leeson?
Like I said, we're spraying disinfecting rooms, that's what we've been working on today and have been in the past couple of weeks. We've been getting in while we're at school, doing dental education, thanks to Ms. Katie Garrett's Gary, with all the scheduling through ELQI and our health department after they give the flu shots. We're getting ready to start with Ash and Jeffress on Monday, coming in and doing the health screenings at school. We have been doing all kinds of trainings through the State Department with math, ELA, science, and also, we're getting ready to start up with our Read to Be Ready grant training that will be coming up February 20th and 21st, right next to our next early release day. We also have random act of kindness for the month of February coming up. So, we're looking forward to that, and having our kids to participate in that, and hopefully some of our adults too, and just spreading some love. So, hopefully that'll be coming up for everybody. So, that's all I have. If you have anything for me.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Robbins?
Thank you. I don't really have a lot more to add than what's already been said, but I do want to congratulate again my building level Teachers of the Year, which is Ms. Joni Byrne and Ms. Elizabeth Carroll. They work very hard for us, and we certainly appreciate them. We are full swing and process of evaluations. We're hoping to get those completed soon before testing starts. Can't always guarantee that, but that's kind of our goal this year, to have those completed. And of course, we're cleaning, so I've just come to the conclusion though that even when you do the best you can do, that's all you can do. So, but we do appreciate our custodians, because they're working very hard during the day and evening. And I think I can speak for all the principals in saying that I certainly for one appreciate that they're working on the truancy law. And that's an issue that we seem to have every year. And I didn't particularly care for the new policy that was put into place. It makes it a lot more difficult for us to follow through on. And Mr. Marley is always really good to work with us on that. So, I appreciate that he made that phone call, and it's gotten by our representative to make some changes in that. So, that's all I have, unless you have something for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dawn, do your round.
Hi, I apologize, I was trying to give everybody a place to sit, so. Anyways, just want to congratulate all of our building level Teachers of the Years, especially Ms. Melanie Garrett and Ms. Ashley Hawkins. Just congratulate, I mean, everybody worked so hard, and like Mr. Hall said earlier, it's very hard to have to nominate and choose those folks, because they do an exceptional job. Also want to congratulate some of our band students. They went to the T double S BDA Junior Band Clinic. We have Zoe Young, who got 5th chair percussion, Seth Posey, who had 5th chair alto sax, Luke Terry, 3rd chair baritone, and Caitlin Terry, who was 1st chair flute. Anybody that has 1st chair means that she had the high score overall. Now, we're talking about the entire East Tennessee region. So, Mr. Hunt and that crew did a fabulous job at the end of January, so they are doing wonderfully. We wrapped up our basketball season this past weekend with sectionals. Our boys and girls basketball teams played a great year this year, and our cheerleaders. I know everyone has seen some incidents, that has happened on social media, but I'm just going to talk to the positive on that. Those kids played hard, and they did well, and those coaches coached well. So, very proud of all of those kids and all of those coaches. And Mr. Hall will say a little bit more about that in just a little while. Our academic team has started their meets already this year. And also, when I saw it raining yesterday, and don't be mad, but that's when I thought of soccer. So, soccer will be starting, and like Ms. Vaden said, it is that scheduling thing, and it's very hard, because you're trying to pack in six weeks of playing soccer, and we have no control over that weather. But they always do a fabulous job, whoever's over that always does a fabulous job getting everything done and wrapped up. But I have nothing else, unless someone has something for me.
Thank you. Mr. Cash?
I was going to say, I gave my seat up first before Ms. Hunt. I really don't have a whole lot, other than like what Ms. Robbins said, what everybody else was saying. Our midterm grades will go out first next week. They were, they'll go out then this week. I want to congratulate all of the building level teachers, especially the ones at Fairview, Ms. Kayla Flowers, and Ms. Laura Beth Lloyd. They did an excellent job at our school. Congratulate our basketball team, they ended their season also in pitching fours last week in the quarterfinals. Brayden Brummett was selected all tournament of the state sectionals. And I just hope everybody can get well this weekend, thanks all, and come back and ready to work. So, and that's all I have, unless you guys have anything for me.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Thank you. First thing, I want to thank Ms. Nancy Williamson, the On-Nine Special Schools Chairman of the Board who's here tonight, I guess you would say, rating our board meeting tonight, if you go for a word of distinction. Thank you, it's an honor to have you here tonight. She's a Level 5 Board Member of the On-Nine Schools, as a past president also too with the TSBA School Board. First thing I want to do, I want to congratulate all of our building level and our district level Teachers of the Year, as each principal can tell you, it is so hard when it comes to choosing that, if you let your staff vote, how your selection process is. It's a great honor to be selected by your peers at any time. And like I said, congratulations to all that have selected this year. Want to congratulate all of our middle school teams that could participate in the sectional tournament, if you didn't, it still was an outstanding season for Scott County Schools. Birchfield Boys Team did reach the sectional finals, and actually had a 15-point lead in the third quarter, only to see that slip away and lose to a very good Mary Hughes basketball team out of Kingsport, Tennessee, by eight points. Fairview Boys also are on game and made it to the final eight in the tournament also too. As I said, Robbins Girls, I know, won their first game. So, and we had a very good showing this year in the sectional tournament. As Ms. Craft already mentioned about an incident that took place at the ballgame with Birchfield and Mary Hughes, which I believe stemmed from some timeouts going on, and some cheerleaders maybe doing some tumbling into the Birchfield cheerleaders. Just as the game was only getting heated at a crucial point during the game. Our cheerleading's sponsor at that time, out of safety, asked their cheer sponsor if they could please tumble in behind, just put a cord in behind, tumble in behind. I think that kind of incited their sponsor, and as maybe you all have seen the response that the sponsor did to our cheer sponsor, was very unprofessional, very uncalled for. And then they even had their girls to go flip into our girls immediately after, which really put a lot of pressure, not only on administrators, everyone that was there at the game, because it could very easily, easily get a bad situation. Thankful for our school, that we did not. And I'll also say too, that for two days, I've got a chance to sit down with the Sullivan County Director of Schools, Ms. Evelyn Travoloski, and she's been very apologetic, I know Ms. Tanya has spoken with the principal at Mary Hughes also too, and I know that the sponsor herself has contacted Ms. Brooks about the situation. They've all been very apologetic. I think they let competition, the heat of the moment, that they kind of drive their actions, which is, you know, still unexcusable, but we have accepted their apology. If getting to know Ms. Travoloski and talking to other people that were there, she is very meaningful in what she says, she holds her people very accountable to the highest level. She's been a little aware of some problems going on there, she's addressed those, and I have full confidence, believe, that she will do what she says she's going to do. We move forward, we accept their apology, and from that point, we dropped it, and we're going forward with us, and knowing that if we compete against them again, we'll expect more sportsmanship from that process. Again, our bunch are very proud of our bunch, how they can handle, condone themselves throughout the process there. We are canceled for today and tomorrow for Scott County Schools. At this time, we have used 10 snow days. We have three bank snow days left. We're hoping and praying for no more bad weather, which none of us can predict. I don't know what can happen at that point, but I would say we do have three bank days left. And let me go and say that when I make the decision on such a sickness, I don't make my decision on Facebook calls, I don't make my decision on phone calls that come in the office, I don't make my decision based on, one school's attendance may be down. I look at the district, I look at what we have, and I talk to my principals. Mr. Marley talks to our attendance monitors, we see if people are signing out, if they're there, if they're really sick. We see attendance, and how it's been running. Let me say, last week, we ran about anywhere from 90 in the week to close to 93 at the end of the week. And it kind of felt like the sickness was starting to really hit us some last week, especially at some schools, not all schools. So, in all honesty and retrospect, I kind of had in my mind, I hope it snows Thursday night so we can take Thursday or Friday off. Well, we got our wish, even though the roads were probably passable. We still, you know, kind of hoped that sickness could get out. Monday, we did have ice, when the transportation buses were calling at 5 o'clock and said we can't get the buses on the roads. Again, another blessing, I thought, another day to go with sickness. As we come back in, our attendance dropped and got worse. So, it went from 93 to 90 percent on Monday. We were at 87 percent as a district yesterday. And as I said, there's no magic number I'll look at. I talked to health departments, I talked to providers, kind of see what we're seeing, what we're dealing with, and folks have a feeling it's going to continue for about the next three weeks. Kind of listening to the district health departments, and watching news media, and going on with that. that. I know as schools, we've taken every precaution we can to clean the schools, to make sure that everything in our sanitary. While we're off, we're, you know, I know each principal's having to be able to sanitize. We're taking every precaution we can. It's tough, you know, because we have 80, you know, when you have 80, we see that one could be in school or there, but as I said, we made the decision kind of looking for, hopefully, to get rid of this and we come back, that we can get started and proceed with school and hopefully get no more bad weather. Because like I said, we have three days left. Do I think we could? I'm not, I don't know, God, I don't, I hope it don't, believe me. I hope that we're done with it, but like I said, we do have three days that are still banked. And that's what goes into my decisions I make. Let me say that there are other schools that were going, their attendance was still worse than ours, that are still in today. I do know that Clayman County caught off yesterday. His total attendance was at 81 percent. Morgan County was at 85, and you know, Morgan County is gone. And after I talked to the health department, talked to some providers, I felt like that it was not going to get any better, and we probably pushed it even more into next week. So hopefully this will help people get well and come back next week when our attendance will be backed up. One other thing, a day on the hill for us, like next Monday, Tuesday, we'll be at the Homer Suites, and as Mr. Keesland said, that is a beautiful building that they've moved into, and you will really like what the state has done for our representatives and our senators in their new office complex. Also, it's good news what he brought to us from the, on the attendance policy. I know the new attendance policy that was being passed really felt like that it was passed upon, and this has been really, Mr. Merly, I have to say, he's made the call, and I appreciate Mr. Keesland for taking initiative and doing it and getting some changes in this bill for the initiative. We don't have a tremendous chronic absenteeism in Scott County schools. I think last year we were right at 8 percent. Now, the state had, that's our numbers, the state had us at 6, which is tremendous. I talked to a neighboring district, they're 22 chronic, 22 percent chronic absenteeism. So I take it our principals, our parents, Mr. Merly, everyone involved in getting our kids in school is one reason why we don't have a great chronic absenteeism. But one of the other reasons is, is our relationship with Judge Cotton and the things he does for us to help our students at the art chronically, to get them in school, put things in place where they need to be here, they have to be here. We have a great working relationship there. Now, let me say this too. Taking a child to court is the last thing we want to do. We have intervention steps in place, and we want to educate every child in this community. And for them to succeed, they have to be at school, and it is by law they have to be at school. So we follow the law and what is provided by us and what we have in place with our attendance policies. It works. It has worked tremendously for us. The new law would put tons more pressure and work upon our administrators to administer. We have to have outside agencies come in. Now, not saying we're never opposed to more work, but you guys have worked to where you're stretched so thin as it is. So this was a good thing he said tonight. I know that Mr. Merly's going to be pleased, and I have to commend him because he's the person that made the call, and thanks to Mr. Keesland for following up with that. If they go to the five days, to the three, that'll be tremendous, tremendous help for you guys. And like I said, ours works, and it's working for us. Now, some system, they're over flooded, especially in your Knox, your Davidson, your Shelby, those systems. And that's the main reason why is the new laws were put into place as it reads. They didn't take for granted, you know, not one size fits all. Well, we have worked, so I'm very appreciative of what Mr. Keesland said tonight. One last thing, I know it's been long-winded tonight. Want to congratulate Mr. Mike Winsted for the Meriville City Schools Director of Schools. Mr. Winsted has some ties to Scott County. Mr. Winsted's dad, Joe Winsted was the first head coach at Scott High School. Mike's brother Randy was assistant coach for me back in the mid-nineties. Great family, Mike is a tremendous man. Mike won the state Director of the Year, and he's also in the top four nationally. So if you run into Mike today on the hill, and I'll introduce you to him, terrific person, terrific man, well-deserving, of the answer, and we're pouring from Mike that he can win national superintendent of the year representing Tennessee and all of that, East Tennessee, and also with some Scott County ties. So, Chairman, that's all I have. Unless you have questions for me.
Thank you. Adam Saban, adoption of the agenda. In accordance with Board Policy Number 1.403, the Scott County Board of Education should adopt an agenda of all items to be active on during the regular monthly meeting. May I have a motion to approve the February 8th, 2018 agenda with the following removed? The ENA for Internet services in item 9B.
Make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Kim?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Item 8, consent agenda items. In accordance with the Scott County Board of Education Policy Number 4.403, the Board of Education may include routine and non-controversial items on a consent agenda, which may be adopted by a single vote without discussion. Any item on the consent agenda may be removed and placed on the regular agenda for further consideration at the request of any board member. May I have a motion to approve the items listed on the consent agenda as follows? A, approval of the minutes for January 11th, 2018. B, approval of the bids for December 2017. C, approval of the December 2017 financial report.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kim?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Item 9A, approve overnight trips. More approval is needed for out-of-state overnight school trips according to the Board Policy Number 4.302. May I have a motion to grant permission for the following trips? Fairview Elementary Beta Club, Pigeon Forge, May 14th through the 16th, 2018. Fairview Elementary and Huntsville Middle, T double S BDA Junior Band Clinic, January 26th through 27th, 2018. Scott High School Cosmetology Seniors Skills USA, Chattanooga, Tennessee, March 18th through the 21st, 2018. SCOT, March 5th through 6th, 2018. Birchfield Elementary, Fairview Elementary, Huntsville Middle, Robbins Elementary, Winfield Elementary School Basketball Players and Cheerleaders, Pigeon Forge, Tennessee. Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kim?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Item 9B, approve, approval to file for E-Rate services. Each year, the school system applies for funding through FCC E-Rate program. Existing E-Rate contracts need to be renewed before application can be submitted. Authorization is requested to allow the Director of Schools to renew existing E-Rate vendor contracts as well as apply for E-Rate funding for the 2018-2019 E-Rate year. May I have a motion to authorize the Director of Schools to apply for E-Rate services for the 2018-2019 E-Rate funding year? This includes the renewal of extension of existing multi-year contracts with Holland Telefont and US Cellular for telecommunication services, telepage for wide-area network services, ENA for Internet services removed. Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Kim?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Item 9C, approve amendments. In pursuit of Board Policy Number 2.201, the Scott County Board of Education needs to approve budget amendments required to balance the budget for the fiscal year 2017-2018. This action will allow funds to be applied to areas of the budget that lack sufficient funds to complete the school year. May I have a motion to approve the following amendments? CTE Budget Amendment Number 2 and General Purpose Amendment Number 5. Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Kim?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Item 9D, approve the Read to Be Ready Grant. The Read to Be Ready Summer Grant provides literacy opportunities to students entering first, second, and or third grade. The goal is to develop students' love for reading and writing over the summer months. May I have a motion to approve the Read to Be Ready Grant for the following? Fairview Elementary, $30,000. Huntsville Elementary, $36,000. Robbins Elementary, $23,200. Winfield Elementary, $18,000. Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Kim?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Item 9A, school calendar. In accordance with Scott County Board Policy Number 1.800, the Scott County Board of Education will adopt upon recommendation of the Director an official school calendar for the succeeding school year. The calendar will identify holidays, vacation days, summer sessions, and other extensions of the school year. The calendar may be revised by the Board for such things as inclement weather or other factors if recommended by the Director of Schools. May I have a motion to approve the school calendar for the 2018-2019 school year? Motion. Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kim?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Item 9F, award bids. Bids for burnishers were received and opened by the fans committee and referred to the Board for consideration. May I have a motion to award the bid to Elsie Sanitary Supply Company for the three Tomcat 204 burnishers in the amount of $16,950. Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
We are talking about three for the price of $16,950.
Yes, yes, all three for $16,500.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Kim?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Item 9G, bid bleachers. In accordance with Scott County Board of Education Policy Number 2.806, concerning bids and quotations, all purchases of supplies, materials, equipment, and contractual services in excess of $10,000 shall be based on competitive bids. May I have a motion to request that the Scott County Finance Director bids involving item bleachers for Robbins Elementary School? Motion. Second. Any discussion? Waiting on the real call.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Kim?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Before we go to the next item, Mr. Silcox, do you have anything?
I was just going to say, I got a call from Ms. Dawn, and she's having serious eye problems, so she couldn't leave her, is that correct?
Ms. Dawn, good?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott, if I can announce one thing. I was going to close the office here tomorrow, so they could clean here. I'm getting a lot of sickness in my staff, so if you need me, I'll be out here, kind of on and off, but just call myself. So I'm going to close here tomorrow so that we can get this.
All right, thank you. Item 9H, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Kim?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?